I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese. Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dawkins.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
Tabliek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I have two.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing under Ms. Lanning.
One thing under Ms. Lanning, okay. Then I have just one. And that would be the intent to reimburse, and that would be Ms. Stevens. Consent items.
Moved to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. At this time, we will have the scheduled hearings. I would like to open the hearing on the ordinance abandoning City Code, Chapter Four, Animals, Article One, in general. And Bruce, if you want to take that for us.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. This is hopefully the culmination of a long-running effort to bring some clarity to our animal ordinance. The ordinance, as proposed, would replace an existing section of the municipal code with clear, more objective language. The council originally pursued a change to the animal ordinance to get rid of the subjectivity that existed in the old ordinance and to create clearer standards for keeping animals. And in the course of that analysis, staff estimates that, under the proposed ordinance, the city will lose about forty dollars a year in revenue, but will more than make that up in staff time that is not spent in the field looking at these individual situations. Tonight, we present three alternatives. We need to leave the municipal code as it is, adopt the new ordinance with the proposed language, create more indifferent standards, or really disallow the keeping of all animals would be another option. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, given a number and published. And just to refresh the council's memory, the ordinance, as proposed, does not allow the keeping of chickens or fowl in the residential areas, only in egg districts or industrial districts, but does permit rabbits and pigeons in all three of those districts.
Am I right, Bruce, to say that in limited numbers?
Yes, in limited numbers, definitely. The numbers are stated in the ordinance, as are the conditions under which they may be kept.
Are there any questions from the audience? At this point, hearing done, I will close the public hearing. I'm sorry, do you have a question?
Yeah, well, I'm more disappointed.
Please come on up to the front. Sure.
First of all, I, well, I'm Nick Davis. I'm on the planning commission as well. I appreciate what you've done with the animal ordinance so far. It's a lot more, there's a lot more clarification than there was before. However, I have a couple of comments in regards to the chickens portion of it. I think you're, you're doing, here, hold on. I think you have a good start with the industrial section of it. However, I would like to see residential areas also have the ability to include chickens. You know, I brought a couple conditional use permits from other communities, if you guys would like to review that. I guess personally, I just feel like we'd be missing out on an opportunity by not allowing chickens in residential areas. You know, definitely keep rules on it. But yeah, I guess I grew up raising chickens, and my wife and I here, we would eventually in town like to raise them, probably at the next house that we purchased, but yeah, that's about all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Davis? Am I right?
Davis.
Davis?
Yep.
Okay.
You said you raised chickens when you're, in your youth?
Yes.
Was it for a project, or?
No, we actually had an operation of about, you know, a hundred, 150 chickens, both roiler hens and egg layered, egg laying chickens. So this was out at kind of a hobby farm situation. So I'm familiar with raising chickens. I know, you know, roosters are definitely something I personally would not want to have in the city limits, but as far as hens, they are, you know, compared to other pets in town, they're, you know, not that bad, so.
So this is out in the country that you had a hundred and some chickens?
Yes, it was. It was fifteen miles out of town.
Any further questions? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks for coming and speaking. You know, we've heard that raising chickens in your backyard can be a mess with the manure and whatever else. Tell me, from your experience, is it, do they create a big mess, or what do you do with the manure? And how often do you clean it?
Yep, good question. You know, with our operation with a hundred, 150 chickens, you know, we had a fairly large building for them. In regards to the smell, it wasn't bad. You know, they do create waste, but we were good at keeping up with that. You know, we clean every spring, and, you know, we'd never have issues with that personally. You know, this other, this conditional use permit that I found suggested that, and this is up to ten hens, that you clean, you know, we'll just call it a coop, you know, the living places for the chickens, to clean it once every couple of weeks. In my experience, I would say that's enough to keep smell down and just, you know, sanitary purposes.
So, and I meant in town, not, not we were raising the hundred and some chickens, but?
Correct.
So you're saying that there wouldn't be much of a mess in town and the odor would be minimal?
I, I think so. You know, also, you know, of course, the chickens would have to be confined within your, you know, the property that you own. You know, other things like keeping it a few feet within your property, I think that would prevent your neighbors from even really smelling anything. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this point, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to the council. If you have discussion about it, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, those that presently have permits and moving forward with those, will they be grandfathered in perpetuity, or do they have to meet some criteria, or what happens with people that presently have permits?
We understand that. The permits that have been issued in the past have been issued for an annual period of time, so they would be allowed to run to the expiration of their permit period, but at that point, it would terminate.
Okay, then they have to meet the new criteria.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Bruce, if there is a, I'm sorry, Bruce, if there is a, an ordinance, if there is a vote on that, what exactly would they be voting on?
To approve the ordinance as presented in the pack and as introduced, and it would be the ordinance that would allow no chickens in the residential areas. That's the way it was finally proposed to the council and introduced.
Okay, thank you. Further questions? Councilman Blee?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know when I was growing up on the farm, we had chickens, and they are messy, they are dirty. I don't think a residential area within, inside an urban area, in an urban community is a place for necessarily to have chickens. So that's where I don't, don't support having chickens within an urban area. Now, I know this ordinance allows for chickens within certain districts of the city, basically the agricultural and industrial districts. We are allowing to have, allowing chickens within those areas. And in fact, isn't there residential houses within those districts, Bruce?
To the best of my knowledge, there are some residences within the industrial park zone. That's correct.
So that may be appropriate for those residents in those districts.
Right, they would be allowed to have them because their properties are zoned industrial.
To have fowl, so. But yeah, I support the ordinance as is. I don't think, at this point in time, that chickens should be allowed within an urban, urban setting, inside the R1 or R2 or R3 zoning districts. And I think, Mr. Mayor, we had a letter from a residence.
If I may call, Councilman Dawkins, do we need to read that letter?
Pardon?
The letter that we had, that you answered on email, do we need to read that?
I don't believe I answered that letter, did I?
Yes, I think you did.
Can I see the letter?
It was sent out on email, I think, to all council and the mayor, and I think it should be entered into the record.
Yeah, I did not respond to this. I did not respond to that letter.
I'll ask the city administrator, do we need to read that into the record?
I would defer to the city clerk on that. I think you can just accept it.
You can just accept it, but I guess you should acknowledge the sender of the letter and put it, place it on record.
Okay, I will do that. We'll place this on record, and the sender of the letter is, I'm assuming, a Ms. Amy Hagan. She is a Wilmer resident, and she spoke in favor of having the chickens. And we'll put this on record for all of the councilmen. Does she have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, you said we would lose about forty dollars a year in revenue, but we would more than make it up in staff time. You got any, have any ideas on how much staff time over a year's time we have spent, high and low, in the past, trying to monitor this situation?
No, I really couldn't quantify it, except I know it's more than forty dollars.
Any further question, Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think the Community Development Committee worked long and hard on this and went to a couple drafts, and they tried to come up with something reasonable. And again, I think this is a reasonable compromise from where we started, and in that regard, I'd move that we adopt the ordinance, give it a number, and publish it.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to, to give, to adopt the ordinance, to give it a number, and to publish it. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few questions, Bruce. I was thinking earlier of how we got to this point. We had an ordinance in place, albeit a good one or a bad one, and it seemed to be working. I mean, I don't recall people coming and complaining of chickens being next to somebody's home. I don't recall any of them. Maybe you received some at your office, but I don't recall them. And I'm wondering, how did we get to this point? What's the history up to this point where we're going to adopt this ordinance of no chickens at all within the residential area? How'd we get here?
Well, simply put, there was some discussion over some of the recent chicken permits, poultry permits, and the council asked staff to do some research to try to end the subjectivity of the current ordinance, which really didn't even lay out a process, a good process for review. It asked the chief of police to go out in the neighborhood and look at it and see if it's a problem. Not a good way of doing things, because it just puts so much subjectivity into it. If one neighbor complained, you know, then all of a sudden, you had a, had a situation where there was opposition to the, to the chickens, and the permit was likely to be denied, and you could have that issue arise just from a dispute between two neighbors. So it went back to staff. Staff prepared a draft. I know the chief of police did a lot of research on it, prepared the initial draft, and brought it to committee, and that actually did provide for fowl in residential areas with limited numbers. And it also spelled out the conditions under which they could be kept, distance from property line, what they had to have for shelter, conditions for maintaining cleanliness, some sanitary conditions. And that got discussed at the committee level. At that point, I think it was a consensus of the committee to move forward and to delete chickens. It seemed to be that there was less support at that time as the process was discussed, and as it evolved, there was less support for the idea of having chickens in the residential neighborhoods, and that led to the last draft.
Have we had many complaints in the past of chickens in somebody's yard? Again, I don't ever recall any coming to a committee meeting.
I can say that there have been very few.
Okay, and then, Mr. Davis, was it, he mentioned a good point now. Conditional use permit, could somebody come in and apply for a conditional use permit to have chickens in the yard in a residential area? I mean, is this black and white? No, because we do have conditional use permits for other.
With this ordinance, it would be black and white. Our zoning ordinance prohibits the keeping and raising of livestock and fowl in.
City.
Virtually in the city, except there's a municipal code section that accepts that, accepts out specific instances.
So there would, no one would be allowed to have a conditional use permit for chickens?
That's right. The people that would be in the industrial zones or the egg zones would be allowed to have them by right. It would be a permitted situation. It wouldn't be specified in the zoning ordinance, it would be permitted by right in the municipal code.
Okay. That's my questions, thank you.
Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, currently, the people that have permits, do any of them qualify for next year?
One, Luther Septon, that's got a number of chickens, a large quantity of chickens, but he lives in an industrial zone.
Okay.
That's the only one I'm aware of.
How many permits do we have out currently now? Six, seven?
Half, doesn't.
Approximately six to seven.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Thank you for coming. I would like to open the hearing for the ordinance adopting a new Chapter Seventeen Service Water Management, Article One, in general, and Article Two, illicit discharge and illegal connection to the city stormwater drainage system. Ms. Stevens, would you address us on that point?
Yes, this ordinance, that the ordinance that was before you this evening is for our municipal storm sewer system. It is a condition of our MS four permit. It would prohibit illicit and illegal discharge and connections to our storm sewer system. It establishes and defines what those illegal illicit connections are, and establishes our legal authority to carry out the inspections and surveillance, monitoring, enforcement procedures, and then also, also provides and specifies what the enforcement mechanisms are for the city, and I would recommend that, that the ordinance be adopted.
The hearing has been opened. Is there any discussion amongst the people in the audience? If not, we will close the public hearing and open it up for discussion amongst the council. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The MS four permit, we've gotten them in the past, correct, and this is a completely new regulation that we have to comply with? Is that what it is, brand new?
Well, it's not, it's, I mean, I think we have always been just trying to discourage illegal connections and discharge into our system and such, but it is an increasing requirement of the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency as part of our MS four permit. Its best practice is to have an ordinance in place.
Because it's always been illegal to dump anything into our stormwater.
But we haven't had an ordinance such as this that really specifies and clarifies.
Okay, thank you. Call for the question. Call for the question.
Sorry, with the.
Nobody made a motion.
I'll move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Give it a number, adopt it.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the ordinance, assign a number and publish it. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, just clarify, this ordinance does not allow anybody to dump anything into the sewer other than, other than water, stormwater, any pollutants, chemicals?
It specifies on pages, it specifies on page two G what a hazardous material is, and it includes any substance waste combination, which because of its quantity concentration or physical, chemical, or infectious characteristics may cause or significantly contribute to a substantial present or potential hazard to human health, safety, property, or the environment when improperly stored, transported, disposed, or otherwise managed. I mean, so it does, it defines those.
And that is.
And pollutant is also defined on page four, Section Q.
And enforcement of that is done by?
Enforcement of that is done by the city.
The city?
And the enforcement provisions are Section Seventeen, which is found on page 10, Section Seventeen through Thirty-Eight enforcement.
Is there any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. I would like to open the ordinance, or the hearing for the ordinance repealing the City Code, Chapter Five, Finance and Taxation, Sales and Use Tax, and Motor Vehicle Excise Tax. Stroken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is an ordinance repealing Section Five, Chapter Five of the municipal code. That chapter deals with the financing taxation of the local option sales tax and the motor vehicle excise tax. As part of a little history, the, in 2004, the city held an election, a special election for determining if they would be authorized to have a local option sales tax. That election passed, and then the 2005 Special Legislative Session again authorized the city to implement a local option sales tax. Part of that process required the city to adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code, even though the statute sunsets the tax at the end of 2012. This action tonight would clean up the municipal code. If there would be no action, you would have a part of the municipal code that would be irrelevant and not pertinent to a tax because it expires. We're asking, or recommending that you adopt the ordinance effective January one of 2013.
Are there any comments from the audience? At this point, I will close the public hearing and bring it to the council.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve and adopt the ordinance, to sign a number and publish it. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Kevin, are there anybody signed up to speak?
We have Jason Butler.
Jason, your name and address?
My name is Jason Butler. I live at 1019 Gordon Avenue in Wilmer. The reason why I stopped here tonight is the traffic from the new mosque that is over there on the north side. I was wondering what it would take to get a stop sign put in on 11th and Gordon, because the traffic is, it's not a one-day, day, day thing, it's nonstop, all-day traffic, and it's increased a hundredfold.
And which corner are you?
I'm on the corner of 11th and Gordon, and me and my neighbors have talked, I mean, there's kids, numerous kids, and there's no stop sign from Coner Road Five all the way up to 10th Street, so the traffic gets pretty good crews, and with the tra, tra, traffic coming off 11th from, from the mosque, it's nonstop, all the, I don't, I don't know if they have meetings there at set times every day, but it's a constant, constant traffic. And I've seen way too many close calls. I was involved in one that wasn't a clo, clo, close call on 11th and Lake. I was, I was hit by a gentleman pulling out of the mosque when it was their church or whatever was going on. But it's, but the traffic is, is huge, and there's a lot of kids in, in every direction of that, and it seems that they all leave from there and then come up to Gordon and then go that way.
Ms. Stevens, is this something that you want to address this evening, or is it something?
I think that we could have Public Works and/or our city engineer, which is currently Bolton and Mink, take a look at it, and Mr. Peterson and I will, either Mr. Peterson or I would then get in touch with Mr. Butler. We have his address and phone number, so we can do that, but thank you.
Okay. Do you have a question for this gentleman?
Yeah, could that be an item our police department could look at with our civil, our community service officer?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we can, we could set one there and do traffic counts, probably indicate how much traffic's going through at certain times of the day. It would be beneficial for us not to waste our time to sit there for 24 hours, so if you could give me some indication as to when the biggest problem is, that would be helpful to us.
Okay. The, where I've seen, and I'm usually gone from eight to five, is, is in the evening time, from, you know, I'm home from five, and, you know, all the kids are out playing, and there is, it's, seems like there's just constant traffic, and there's people, when, when you're coming, it would be east on Gordon, there's no stop sign, so people get up their speed, and there's a lot of people just pulling out of 11th on the garden, and I've seen way too many clo, 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 close calls, and I got a scary feeling that somebody's going to get hurt eventually there.
We'll do some random traffic counts. Unfortunately, we won't have previous numbers to compare to, but at least we can provide basic numbers.
Thank you, Jason. It has been turned over to the city administrator and to the chief and helped it out.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further, anybody else scheduled to speak, Kevin?
No, Mr. Mayor.
At that point, then we'll move into the Finance Committee report for September 24th. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was public comment. We had two citizens commenting, Mr. Herser questioned continual donations to community organizations, and he also raised concerns regarding employer's share of benefits. Mr. Sullivan opposed a pay increase proposed for the mayor and consult, and he did offer a possible alternative. The second item on our agenda was Vision 2040 presentation. We had Ron Erpelding, and he presented an overview of the Vision 2020 process, which began in late 1999. Significant accomplishments resulting from that project were referenced, including Wilmer's All-American City Award in 2005. Recent discussion amongst the original community leadership groups reveals that much has changed and evolved in our community since 1999, and it may be time to create Vision 2040. Ken Warner explained that a steering committee has held meetings to review the pros and cons of a new vision process, with the consensus that it is time to revisit Wilmer's future. After receiving several recommendations, the steering committee interviewed and subsequently, subsequently received a proposal from Next Generation Consulting of Madison, Wisconsin, for a total cost of $27,000. The steering committee is requesting a contribution from the city of Wilmer, the amount of $5,000 towards this endeavor. Councilmember Dawkins inquire about, inquired about the facilitator used in 2020 for Port Vision 2020, and that was. Vision 2020, and that was Carl New, and he stated that he should also be contacted for a proposal for Vision 2040. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee to participate in Vision 2040, to commit $5,000 towards the project, and to direct staff to determine whether funding is available in the 2012 budget or the proposed 2013 budget.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to participate in Vision 2040, to commit $5,000 towards the project, and to direct staff to determine whether funding is available in the 2012 budget or the proposed 2013 budget. Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have an answer on whether we can pay for it out of 12 or look at it in 13, and it's a little of both. In, in the mayor and council professional services, there's about $4,500 remaining in 2012. So the recommendation would be to use $2,500 of that amount of the 2012 budget, and then utilize $2,500 from the 2013 mayor and council professional services to fulfill the $5,000 obligation. The proposed, the, the 2013 budget is, is proposed for that, that account to be $23,000, and 13,000 is proposed for a government relations contract. So there's, there's some money in there. We're talking about the professional services account within the budget.
Any further discussion? Councilman Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the committee meeting, I did support this, but I have some reservations. I think that, number one, I have a document that starts off, as 2011 begins, local government officials are acutely aware of the challenges facing their county, cities, and schools in the months ahead. This document has the masthead of the Association of Minnesota Counties, signed by Jeff Sparts, Executive Director of Association of Minnesota Counties, League of Minnesota Cities, Jim Miller, the Executive Director, representing 830 cities out of 854 in Minnesota, and the Minnesota School Board Association, signed by Bob Meeks, Executive Director of the Minnesota School Board Association. They have been working on this since 2011, probably before. Basically, it says, yet amidst, yet amidst these challenges, there will be also opportunities to redefine, reshape, and reinvent the roles and activities of local governments. We already have an intergovernmental relations committee that meets quarterly, the city, the county, and the school district. And I'm wondering if really we need to be doing this at this time. Again, there is a document out there called Navigating the New Normal, and it was written by Jay Kandrowski of the University of Minnesota Humphrey Institute in Public and Nonprofit Leadership. I really think that to spend five, actually $20,000 on something like this at this time when we already have someone at the state level looking into this, I'm not sure that it's a wise use at this time. And so I do not, after reading this document, I think we have people looking at this at the state level, and we need to listen to what they have to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Councilman Anderson.
Well, with all due respect, I think that totally misses the point. I, I think the, the point here is we're looking specifically at Wilmer, where we want Wilmer to go and where we want Wilmer to be moving forward. We're going to look at, or that group is going to look at a lot of different things, not necessarily just government. It's, it's our whole community. It's a much broader picture. And, and I think that, that we need to get our heads out of the sand and, and look forward and, and support some of these things that are trying to make our community better. Now that said, Mr. Mayor, I know, I noticed that we have Mr. Erpelding and Mr. Warner here. Maybe they might have some, some answers, or may have some comments.
I would like to call on Mr. Erpelding or Mr. Warner to tell us what was accomplished in the 2020, and tell us what you propose to have accomplished in the 2040, and also if you would refresh our memory as to why there are no elected officials on the...
Exactly.
Steering committee.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Ron Erpelding. I'm here as a representative of the community, and I know a formal connection with any organization for that matter. I was a part of the Vision 2020 process, and the information that was submitted to each of you, I believe, as part of the committee structure, and I think the members of the council who weren't part of that committee also received the information. The success of that particular initiative was quite amazing and remarkable, and laid the groundwork for a lot of the successes that we're enjoying right now in 2012 and probably beyond. But it didn't just happen. It was a lot of dialogue, a lot of work between elected officials, as well as the chief executive officers, and in your case, department heads who were part of that process in 1999 and throughout the period that followed after that. The only reason there weren't any elected officials on this round, because when you, when it was set up in 1999, there was a committee put together with the chief official from each of the governing bodies, namely the superintendent, the county coordinator, the city administrator, the executive director, the chamber of commerce, as a part of that process. And so we simply picked up where that process was the last time. Certainly no slight to anybody in elected position whatsoever, but that was the direction from that process that started then. And so lots of, lots of success, I think I shared with you, the members of the committee at the meeting, the first, first session involved about 50 such people, all elected officials, city department heads, the chief executive officer of each of those entities. And they then came up with 10 key elements that were absolutely essential if we're going to position this community for success in the future. And I was pleased to see in your, your boardroom at the council headquarters, those same 10 exhibited on the wall in that meeting room, as they are in the chamber office, and I suspect they are in the Caneyouac County office, and in the school board. So lots good, a lot of good came out of that. But it didn't just happen. It happened because people were talking to each other, working with each other, looking at all kinds of alternatives, gathering information with the assistance from somebody from outside the community, who's in a much better position to ask the hard questions, to point the fingers, to have people look at what is a possibility for that discussion. Once those elements were determined, it was then a large community meeting involving in excess of 150 folks, if I remember, at the, at the Holiday Inn and the convention center. They then had a process of input as to what the concerns, priorities, opportunities, what the future's going to look like if we design, design that future with what we felt from all of the discussion was in the best interest of the city of Wilmer. Then zeroed in on four particular areas of, areas of focus that wanted to be, that were identified as to where we should put our best foot forward and work at solving and providing information, so that we could have some continued success. That did occur, and a variety of things occurred as a result of that, and laid the groundwork for, as I said earlier, some of the things we're enjoying right now. I don't know if that answers your questions.
I do have another question, and that would be, would you be opposed to having elected officials be part of the agreement if, if indeed the council decides to?
Oh, absolutely. Not opposed, absolutely welcome it. The, the initial, you've got to start somewhere when you start talking about this. And so there, we took the, the process that was in place in the last session, and that's what we followed. And it certainly could be added to and way beyond that. But clearly, whatever the process is, my hope isn't, what we're really asking you folks tonight is not just the financial commitment, but even more important, your time commitment, so that you would each commit to being involved for a full day and a half with your cellphones turned off, and perhaps isolated somewhere, so that you can give the time and expertise and thought to that whole process, and along with your colleagues and other elected officials, as well as the chief executive officers and department heads, whoever else from your organization, as well as the school district and the county and the chamber, to be a part of that dialogue. That's, I think, a far greater commitment for all of you in terms of your busy schedules as volunteers, being members of the city council, than the $5,000, which is, I think we pointed out, we have commitments from the other entities and have put forth a plan to cover the potential expenditure that's been arrived at at this point.
Do you have any considerations that would point directly to the success of the 2020 vision? I mean, is there anything that points directly to the success of the 2020 vision?
Well, I think I could, I could read that information to you, about, about five or six bullets in that first page that really spell out some of the things that grew out of that initiative. And if you'd like me to, to itemize them, I could certainly do that.
Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think it would be good just for the public to hear some of these accomplishments of 2020, and, I mean, we've got them in our packet here, but I think the, the community needs to hear some of these.
Well, first, I'd like to start with the 10 critical or strategic elements that were identified by the first planning session involving all the elected officials that were a part of this process. And those 10 key points were infrastructure, transportation, healthcare, telecommunications, population growth, integrated services, economic development, multicultural population, world-class education system, and a positive image. Those 10 things collectively were IDs. Then from the much larger community group that got together, including members of the, the initial group, four particular priorities were identified, and they included diversity and tolerance, lifelong learning, economic sustainability, and recreation and culture. And as was pointed out at that committee meeting, the challenge we have as we look to the future is, what is it about the city of Wilmer and our area that will make folks who are in their twenties and thirties at this point, and soon in their forties, et cetera, choose to come to the Wilmer and Caneyouac County area, when they have choices all over the state of Minnesota, and for that matter, all over the world, as to where they want to raise their families, do business, work, and all those kinds of things? What is it that brands us as a really neat and positive place to, to work and to raise your kids, and all the other things that go with it? What is it that they make the decision to come, seek employment here, when they have choices all over the world, to do that very thing? We need to position ourselves to get an affirmative answer, and our hope is to involve lots of what I call younger people, but at my age, they're mostly younger people. The specific examples, the Recreation and Culture Team, for example, was very successful in securing a, a half million dollar Blandin Foundation grant to help fund the Aquatic Center, for example, at the YMCA. The Skateboard Park, which is now part of our city. The, the Frisbee Golf thing, the Dorothy Olson Aquatic Center, and so on down the line. The baseball stadium. The Wilmer Area Development Corporation is now, came out of that initiative. The Revised and Enhanced City of Wilmer and Caneyouac County Economic Development Commission came out of that initiative, as examples from there. We became a community of promise. Lifelong Learning Committee had lots to do with that. We, two and a half cultural liaison people were, were designated by the Genuine Turkey Store to match a grant from the Blandin Foundation that was secured for 75 grand for a cultural liaison position that worked with the newly formed West Central Integration Collaborative that involved all the school districts in Caneyouac County. Some examples of what grew out of it. And the culminating example, if you talk to the folks who were a part of it, was the Star City or the All, the All-American City designation that was bestowed on the city of Wilmer in 2005. Seems like a couple of years ago, but I guess that's seven years ago.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilman DeBlee.
No, no, don't have any real question, just a couple of comments. I think, you know, with this, was involved with the 2020 project, the planning for that. I think that was one of the best things we ever did, to plan and envision and set a direction of where we're going with the city, and set some standards out there as to how we want to see this community grow and develop and change. And it's constantly changing. If we don't move forward, we're going to move backwards. That's why I think it's time to move forward with the, you're talking the 2040 visioning process, that seems like a long ways out there. But, and when we did the 2020, the 2020 was a long ways out there as well. And Councilmember Dacken talks about the new norm. Well, this is the new norm. I think we need to plan, we need to direct, and we need to, if we're going to move forward in this community, we've got to have some type of roadmap or a, a plan to move forward with. Otherwise, we're just going to be sitting and, and going in circles. And some of the things that, if, if we're going to be as successful in developing community and have our young people stay here and have worthwhile jobs, and for them to, to stay here and raise a family with, I think we need to move forward with this. And $5,000 is a minimal amount of money to spend on this, this type of project, so.
With $5,000, what are the fees or costs down the road?
There would be some dollars, and perhaps I'd ask Mr. Warner to just speak to a particular point.
Ken Warner, President of the Wilmer Lake City, Chamber of Commerce, but I'm really here representing us as a stakeholder in the bigger picture, not a chamber-run event, because this is not. But when, we had the experience with the Vision 2020 project, again, the founding partners were able to put the money together to hire Carl New as the facilitator. And as we kept moving forward, the, the thing that we needed the most was to get people to come to the meetings, was food. And we had to pay for the food, and we had to pay for the locations and those kind of things, because it seemed like we could break bread together and talk about issues. So we had to find other funding sources for that. So I think with this here, with the original investment, we're going to probably need to go out and find some sponsors for those kind of things as well, but we don't know yet, because we haven't had any of the initial meetings. I'd like to talk to the point, if I, if I may, about the consultant that we've interviewed, if that's...
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. We, we had the opportunity with the, with the stakeholder group to, to talk about some different consultants. We did talk about Mr. New. We don't even know if he's still out there, but according to Councilmember Dacken, he is.
He's out there.
So, he's out there. But we had heard a lot about Rebecca Ryan and her organization called Next Generation. And, and what we, when we got the proposal from her, and we did the telephone interview with her, it was like she was interviewing us instead of us interviewing her, because she had done her research on the internet about our community, and she was really excited about the Midwest Technology Campus. She was really excited about the diversity in our community, and she was extremely excited about our next group, which is that group of, of professional people ages 20 to 40. And how many of them we have, that we have 140 of them involved in an organization, and they're the ones that are coming to us saying, what's the future for Wilmer? Why do I want to have my friends move here, too? What's going to be next for them? What kind of jobs? What kind of amenities? Because they want more things than what are here right now. But I think if they're part of the planning process, they'll be part of the solution, too. So we've got to engage them in part of the process. Part of what, what Rebecca talked about with us is there's two phases to the project. One is phase one, what she called deep time, and there's questions that they would ask at these community meetings. What puts Wilmer on the map? What historical forces have shaped Wilmer and made it is what it is today? So we're looking kind of in the rearview mirror a little bit. How does Wilmer currently measure up to other cities? Again, we're, we're proud to be a regional center. How do we stack up to other regional centers? How do we stack up to other communities in West Central Minnesota, and so on? So we want to look at that. What have been the most important developments in Wilmer the past 20 years? Again, I think when we, when we take the time to sit down and talk about those, we're going to be pretty proud of what's, what's happened. But what we can talk about, what could be, too, as part of this process. When you think about the citizens who will be alive and living in Wilmer in 2040, perhaps your children or grandchildren, what kind of community do you hope for, for Wilmer, for them to live in? What needs to happen now to enable that future? What external forces and trends shaping Wilmer? Which of these things are within our control and beyond our control? Again, it goes back to Councilmember Dacken's new normal stuff, is that, that's part of this. We have to look to the future. And then the phase two that she has, which I really think is going to really help our community, is dreaming and designing the future. So we're just really sitting down with a blank board saying, if we had everything that we needed to do this, what would we want? Who would we want here? Who would we want to help create this? The future doesn't happen, but Wilmer can proactively design its future that it wants. In this phase, we will work with community leaders, critical community change agents, stakeholders, to review the previous phases' work and design a Wilmer 2040 action plan in the future. Again, this is where we think it's important that we really budget for your time, is we need two days of your time to be part of that community process. The county commissioners, the school board, the chamber board, the next... The county commissioners, the school board, the chamber board, the next group, our ethnic population, our young people, we need everybody to come together so it's the community's visioning process, not mine, not yours, not Ron's, but the community's visioning process. And I think like what we had happen with Vision 2020 is we did kind of the same process, we came up with all these things in the wall, and we kind of funneled them down into priorities, and then the priorities became realities because people in our community had a passion for them, and they wanted to see them happen. So they rolled up their sleeves and went to work. And that's how they happen. So that's part of this process, is that they had the dream, it can happen, I can do it, and I can be part of it. So again, I think that's what makes these things successful is that, and I was at your meeting last, was it last week? We were both there. And we talk about studies and reports, and they're no good if we put them on the shelf. And that's the beauty of these Vision 2020 things, and now Vision 2040, or whatever we call it, is this will be an action plan and won't be put on the shelf.
Mr. Mayor, if I might just add, one of the really important byproducts of the initial process for 2020, and I pointed this out at the committee, was the development of trust amongst elected bodies and a spirit of cooperation and a means, a reason, or an understanding for when you find a problem or a dilemma, you know folks in other elective board and feel very comfortable both as elected officers, but also as chief executive officers to get on the phone, ask the questions, talk about potential solutions, look at alternatives to the way we used to perhaps do something or solve a problem. And with that trust goes a much greater potential, that is, the dollars continue to get tighter, and I think they will. It's just absolutely crucial that we have all avenues open to look at how we can cooperate, do things more efficiently, more economically. And that starts with a trust relationship that's in place as a result of spending time with each other. And there's nothing that builds trust like spending time face-to-face with each other.
And I remember, too, and I think a lot of you might remember this, too, that the chamber used to convene the city, the county, and the school together to have this forum that we called Intergovernmental Forum. Anybody remember that?
Mm-hmm.
It was about the most boring thing in the world to set through. And so I think everybody thought that we could do better together and come up with a plan. And that's really where this Vision 2020 thing came from in the initial start, is let's do something a little better than that.
If I may just ask another question, is that I understand that the 2020 was actually shelved for a little bit. Am I right in that?
Yes. We worked on that project for seven years, I think, and laid and had a lot of things put in place to continue the results over time from that point forward. But felt at that point, we'd done as much as we're going to do in terms of laying a platform or a foundation, what had already been laid would carry us into the future. And so decided that at that point in time, just meeting for the sake of meeting does not yield dividends in any form, that we would shelf the idea until such time, folks thought it was time to start another process. And we're here tonight asking you to consider the start of another process, to vision for the future.
Are there other questions, Counselman?
Yeah, a question for both of you. Out of those, the 2020 plan, which I was not involved in, by the way, but what haven't we accomplished out of all those items? What are the most serious items on that list of the 10 that we need to address?
Well, I'd ask you to go, as I go through that list again, you think about some of the things we need to be addressing.
I already have.
And there's a pile of things I think.
I think we do that annually at our retreats, as I'm sure the county does, and I'm sure the school district does at their annual retreat when they review their budget, look at their five-year, their long-term capital, what their improvements are, what the needs are for the community. You know, it's a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned. We always have to look into the future, but my, is spending money to do this, you know, that we have to make an investment. I agree with that principle, principle idea. But who are the players there?
Well, as I mentioned earlier, your entire city council and whatever you decide in terms of department heads, obviously your chief executive officer, the...
No, who are the players? The city, the county, the school district, and...
The city, the county, the school, the chamber.
And the chamber.
The economic development.
So you've got three government, you've got three, you've got three, four taxing jurisdictions, and we have a business organization that's going to participate in the program to get their viewpoint across. My point is this, I support the idea, but if and only if we get full participation on these groups and committees, not by just one certain group.
I see no reason why that can't happen.
And I think that's really critical because a lot of people think the city of Willmer is the armpit. And we have a lot of changes to do. People are moving out of the city of Willmer, out of the county, out into the rural areas because they don't like city of Willmer. We have to change that image. I'm for it 100%, but the only way you're going to do that is by getting participation, not the people that are the movers and shakers, but the common, ordinary people, too. And we need to get them involved, no matter what organizations they are, but that's where we need the input, because those are the people that make the decision. It isn't just the image that we can put on a piece of paper by all of our great ideas. We need the input and support from the people that are actually going to make it. And with that, I will call for the question.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I could make another comment.
No.
I call for the question.
The question is called for, Counselman. And I've read the motion, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just to confirm something with our city attorney, Mr. Scott, when the question is called, there can be no more discussion. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. I think typically procedurally for more discussion to take place, there would have to be a motion made and affirmative vote, but...
I would defer to your city clerk.
Well, that answer is how we've been practicing it today, so we allow that to continue. If the charter goes in, charter amendments go in, and you've got parliamentary procedures, the answer is no. That is a motion. It needs a second, and then you vote on his motion to call the question. So one person can't stop discussion, the whole council does. That's what will happen probably in 90 days after November. That will be a new procedure. That's one we are technically doing wrong by most parliamentary procedures. One council member does not have that power generally in any of the four parliamentary procedures that are out there.
So you're saying that if somebody calls the question, but another council person wants to comment, we have to vote on that? Whether or not...
Calling the question is actually derogatory. It's really, I make a motion to terminate the discussion on this matter. It then needs a second and a vote. And if it doesn't pass, we keep on discussing. That's how it will work in the future, if the charter amendments ever go through.
But presently, then Mr. Dokken could have spoken, because it's not...
No, presently, we're following past procedure, and that's how we do it, and we've been following the action of the council member calling for the question. You have mutually terminated discussion and moved on to the vote.
Thank you. Now, I need a little bit of clarification. We talked about, you know, how we could fund this, and I think perhaps the best way to handle that is to send it back to the Finance Committee. I mean, I spoke to it a little bit, but...
Certainly, we can bring a recommendation to the next, we can bring a formal recommendation on the funding to the next Finance Committee if that's what you wish.
I think that would be the best way to handle that. All right. Well, the next item on our agenda was Investment Broker Edition. And staff explained to us that Multibank Securities Incorporated offers an Internet-based e-Connect direct service that allows users access to securities inventory issued by all federal agencies. This is a free service offered to multibank clients. In past years, the city's investment policy authorizing the treasurer to conduct investigation transactions was sufficient. However, due to the stringent parameters of the Patriot Act, the city must now adopt a resolution authorizing the city clerk treasurer to open a new account with a new investment broker. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution authorizing city administrator Charlene Stevens or city clerk Kevin Halliday to open an account and engage in transactions with Multibank Securities Incorporated to be used as a broker in the management of the city's investment portfolio.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to introduce the resolution authorizing the city administrator Charlene Stevens or city clerk treasurer Kevin Halliday to open an account and engage in transactions with Multibank Securities Incorporated to be used as a broker in the management of the city's investment portfolio. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
The next item had to do with some items in the 2013 budget. The first one was the Baseball Boosters budget request. Kent Scoglan of the Willmer Baseball Boosters provided a summary to the committee of the funding raised for Totten Stadium at Baker Field. On behalf of the boosters, Mr. Scoglan requested $13,000 in 2013 from the city of Willmer to pay off the outstanding loan balance for the stadium project. It was noted that the mayor had not included funding for the baseball boosters in his proposed 2013 budget. Following considerable discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation of the committee adding $13,000 for the Willmer Baseball Boosters under community organization's contributions in the proposed 2013 budget.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to add the $13,000 for the Willmer Baseball Boosters under community organization contributions in the proposed 2013 budget. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think you had some thoughts on...
I do have some thoughts on that, if I can bring those up to you. I'd like to get in a conversation, if I may, with our finance director, Mr. Olkins. I think it would behoove the council to think about the possibility of taking a portion of the $13,500 that they're talking about as far as an increase in the mayor's and the council's pay and putting that towards the baseball boosters. I'm not sure how we would do that, if I can have your recommendations on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council, Finance Committee, and council have two work sessions planned to have discussions on any changes or future changes to what you've recommended in the budget process. So that would be two opportunities right there that you could have.
So it is conceivable to do something like that, to take, say, a half of the pay raise that we're talking about and put that towards the baseball boosters and maybe taking some other area someplace else in the budget and making that up to the baseball boosters?
I would certainly defer to city administrator Stevens, but I mean, historically, the process has been to take any kind of actions to make adjustments to the mayor's proposed budget by the Finance Committee and the full council, and then have final action in December at the budget hearing.
Also, to tag along with that, you know, I think there's been $1,000 removed from the, I don't know what you call it again, the travel and the...
If you're referring to the question you asked me earlier, there's been line item reductions and additions. You asked me about the mayor and council's travel and conferences line item, and your recommended budget had a $1,000 decrease in that line item, if that's what you're referring to.
Yes, it is what I'm referring to, and I would like to see that increased by $500, but maybe we can take a look at where we can get that $500 from. And I was looking at everyone taking a piece of the pie, you know, and if we can get the city administrator to give up $500 of her travel and conference pay, maybe we can get that put together. How would we do this? Would we go to the Finance Committee?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, the Finance Committee, we would, you know, if the recommendation is approved by the council to add $13,000 to the budget for the Willmer Baseball Boosters, then in order to keep a balanced budget, we would, the staff would go back and look at where that $13,000 can come from and make those recommendations to the Finance Committee. If you recall, the budget is adopted on December 3rd. The budget is not final until it's adopted by the council on December 3rd. We had a situation similar to, you know, a similar situation occur last year in terms of the airport contract, if the council recalls, is that we had in the initial proposed budget, we did not conclude a dollar figure for the airport operations contract, and we had to bring that back to the council and the Finance Committee. And we did that, and we did that as the budget was approved in December 3rd.
Are you recommending that this be brought to the Finance Committee?
I'll defer to the chairman of the Finance Committee at this point.
Counselman?
Thank you. I think I have maybe an easy way to handle this. Let's take it one step at a time. Let's see if we want to do the baseball boosters. If we do, then let's see if we want to do something on the mayor and council salary. Then that gives us some parameters to work with, and we can address, you know, the increasing of the travel and allowance and that sort of thing. But we can't do that until we know if the council wants to do these two things. I mean, we need to know if the council wants to do the...
Then how do we find that out?
Call for the question.
I want to make sure everybody's had a discussion before I call for the question. But I think, you know, there's a motion, and it's been seconded, to add the $13,000. And the next item on our agenda has to do with the mayor and council salary. That'll give us some guidance, I think, at the Finance Committee.
Okay. So should we vote on what we have?
We have, I think you should vote on the baseball boosters, but there may be some further discussion out there.
Is there further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions on this, the baseball boosters. Now, that's $13,000, does that go back to the stadium construction? Where does that...
Bank loan.
That come from?
That is the final payment, am I right?
The baseball boosters, yes. I mean, they came to the Finance Committee on Monday, and I don't want to necessarily speak on their behalf, but the representation from Mr. Scoglan was that the $13,000 is the remainder of the payment due on the loan for improvements to the stadium, and this 13, and the $13,000 would pay that, and that would be the end of the obligation.
Now, we hadn't met our obligation for... Now, we hadn't met our obligation for...
We have...
The commitment that we were going to put forth for that stadium project, is that correct, or...
As best as I can explain it, Councilmember DeBlick, is that there was an original agreement that the city had with the baseball boosters, went back quite a few years ago. There were three-year commitment that the city made, and since that time, the baseball boosters have, on an annual basis, requested funding, and that has either, you know, and that has been included in the budget or not included in the budget. And, you know, they were funded in 2012. In this current budget, they were funded, I think, Mr. Olkins, at $16,000?
$16,500.
$16,500, and their original request for 2013, I believe, was higher than the 13, their original request was maybe $14,000, and then on, at the finance committee, they reduced that to a $13,000 request and said that that would be the final payment. There isn't a formal written agreement any longer between the city and the baseball boosters, and there hasn't been for quite a few years. It's just been done on an annual basis.
I have a question.
But this is the final payment for the stadium?
Mr. Scoglan represented that this is the final payment.
And I have a question for the city attorney. Are you finished, Councilman?
Yeah.
What would happen if we okay the $13,000 for the boosters, but none of the rest of the things have been approved or get approved? What I'm saying is, is that if the mayor's and council's salary isn't somehow adjusted to make up a part of that difference, what would happen?
Mr. Mayor, if I'm understanding your question correctly, if the council commits to funding the booster club at a certain dollar figure, $13,000, I think is the motion, I mean, I think the city would have to find the funds somewhere, if that were, if the council made that commitment. Now, this doesn't appear to be a contract to me, so whether that's enforceable or whether the city could reconsider in the future, I think they probably could, but...
Go ahead, Councilman.
What about, what if we made the motion to fund in contingent upon finding the funds in the 2013 budget?
Excuse me?
I made the motion to...
Mr. Mayor, the action in the minutes is only adding this to the 2013 proposed budget. There's no official action adopting the budget until the December public hearing in December.
Oh, okay.
So this is only an amendment to the proposed budget at this point.
Thank you.
You know, I think I'll call for the question.
I knew you wanted to do that.
Question to reconsider?
Now you confuse me.
I guess I can remove my call. I don't even know if that's legal, Mr. Scott.
I think we're kind of outside the rulebook at this point, so if there's further discussion and you wish to allow that to continue, I think we can all understand what's happening.
Do we have further discussion?
I just have one comment.
Go ahead.
Wait a minute, did Ron remove him?
Did you call for the question?
He does have to.
Yeah, I will. I'll take it off the table.
Thank you, Mr. Christianson. Couple of comments on the $13,000, you know, every year we're faced with the fun and challenging part of finding the money to help out good causes. And when I look at the baseball stadium and the baseball boosters and what they've accomplished and what they've raised on their own, KDJS, Kent Scoglan, all the work that committee has done, they've done a bang-up job, and they're falling short. And I remember, I was sitting in the back of the meeting that day, and they said they had like $8 in their checking account. I can't think of a better cause to give it to. I don't know how we're going to do it, but I wouldn't be opposed to taking it out of reserves. This is a group that's bringing a lot of good things to the city of Wilmer. All the people come in from the community. If they're going to keep forward and continue to go forward and raise money for the community, for the betterment of our community, and I mean "community" meaning the county, because people come in from counties to see the baseball games and participate on our fields, I think it's probably the best darn investment I could think of. I just feel passionate about it, and I just wanted to express that. I think it's a good cause. Somehow, we'll have to find the money.
Thank you for the comments. Further discussion? Councilman DeBlick?
Yeah, just to add to Councilmember Almond's, you know, there's, this is just one of many, many good organizations and community efforts that are asking for or receive funding from the city. So I think we need to not only look at this one, but we look at all of them, so, and I know we, every year, we go through this and we do, and scrutinize all of these funds that we, that are given out to the various organizations with a fine-tooth comb, so...
I think it needs to go back to the budgeting process.
Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the baseball boosters did an excellent job, too, and you got to remember, they stuck with manpower and material, they stuck in over $500,000 into our property. It's the city of Wilmer property. We own it, and I think it's assessed at like $800,000 and some thousand dollars, and the city itself stuck in a little over $200,000. Some of that was insurance money, so if there's a funding shortfall, all we have to do is take it out of brackade. We can afford $13,000 out of there, but we need to get this paid off so that the baseball boosters can get back to business of doing volunteer work for the baseball and softball clubs and helping with other projects that need to be done on our other fields, so...
Does it come down to the fact that is the council and the mayor ready to forego at least a portion of their pay increase in order to obtain this? I think that's the question that the council has to answer.
I'm going to call for the question.
Thank you.
A motion has been made and seconded, has been made and seconded.
Mm-hmm.
Adding $13,000 for the Wilmer Baseball Boosters under community organization contributions to the proposed 2013 budget. I would say, is there any further discussion?
Can't be.
Can't be. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Okay. Now, the other item that we were kind of talking about, the committee talked about the mayor's proposed increase to the mayor and council for 2013, and after a lot of discussion, it was decided that we would move this to the full council with no recommendation. Just to review and bring everybody up to speed and remind you what we're talking about, the mayor's proposed an increase of $1,500 to the mayor and $1,500 to each of the council members. It's a cost of $13,500 in, it's in the 13 budget. So, now, we need to decide what we want to do or if we want to do anything. If we do nothing, the salary remains as it is.
I would like to make the comment that I would forego the mayor's salary increase if indeed the travel and conference is adjusted up to $500, up $500, and the city administrator's travel and conference is deducted by $500. I would, I would be in favor. Go ahead.
Oh, go ahead.
I would just make it short and sweet, take $13,000 of that payoff ballpark, take $500 and put into the council's travel and, what'd you call it?
Yep.
Travel and conferences.
Exactly.
And leave it in the budget. Just dedicate it to those two areas and be done with it, I mean...
I agree. I agree with that. I think we would then have to have a motion that would say redirect 13,500.
Then the budget has to be approved anyway.
The budget has to be approved, but we need to get clarity that everybody's in agreement on, you know, the council and mayor's salary. Only a couple of us have spoken on that. I'm totally in favor of doing that.
Can I hear from some of the rest of the councilmembers? Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just wondering who requested an increase in salary, because I know I didn't.
I think it was the mayor, am I right? I think it was myself that did.
And for what reason?
Well, because, first of all, for the council. I have already agreed that, you know, if we got the full raise, that I would give my, the charity, any increase that I received. But in order to attract the good, honest, capable people, I'm feeling that the council deserves pay, and you say I haven't had one since 2006, am I right? I think that's right, 2006. I hope that answered your question.
It does. Thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Councilman Almond?
Mr. Mayor, or Mr. Anderson, if I could ask you, is your, are you, you're trying to get input from all of us on that particular issue right now?
I think so, yes, because if we don't make a motion to change our salary, it stays.
Yeah. Well, I'd just like to say, I didn't, I don't believe any of us did this for the money. If we did, I don't think we wouldn't be here. I wasn't, it'd be nice to have an increase to compensate for the time off we take away from our business and our jobs, day and a half for this future conference coming up is one, and I have to admit that through the years, and maybe other people have been on the council for quite a while, can remember when, there wasn't nearly as much work. But I have to admit, coming back to the council, that we get a very active council, and you guys got your running shoes on, and you're all doing great. If I could give you a raise, I would say yes, but I personally don't, I don't need the money. I don't, I'm not, we're not doing this for the money, so as far as an increase goes, I don't think it's the right time.
But shall we put towards something else, Councilman?
Pardon me?
Shall we put towards something else, like the baseball boosters?
Be fine with me. We can take it out of there or out of brackade. You know, we can, we can move this budget around as the time goes. It isn't cast in stone. We allocate and reallocate money, so...
However, in talking with our finance director, I believe that the mayor's and the council's increase is in the budget already, am I right?
It is, Mayor, and I mean, and again, I mean, Councilmember Almond, you know, is correct. The budget is not adopted until, it is adopted by the council until December 3rd, and so, you know, you've added $13,000 to the, to the budget for baseball boosters. We can redirect funds to that, we can, you know, come back to the finance committee with a, you know, variety of recommendations. You know, I think each recommendation is somewhat singular, and is, should be on a kind of its own merits. I think the issue with the mayor and council salaries is a timing issue right now, because in order for that to take effect in 2013, the council must adopt an ordinance prior to the November 6 election and such, and so, that is, this is the one item that if you are going to take action on it, an ordinance has to be introduced by the next council meeting in order for it to be effective, or it would not be effective for the 2013 budget, even if it is included in the 2013 budget.
Is the question Chairman Anderson, is it, is the question, should the mayor and the council have an increase at all, or should it be split up between different parts, or...
Well, you know, the committee talked about whether we should have an increase at all, and I don't want to speak for the whole committee. I think the committee members need to speak for themselves. I spoke in favor of no increase, and, you know, if we go no increase, again, we just do nothing, we've got, we've got that money available to use or something else, but we need to get that all cleaned up at some point in time, so we know where the accounting stands on all of this.
Sure.
And I understand, you know, your request to direct part of that money into the travel expenses for the city council members, because I believe you would like to see attendance at more league and coalition meetings.
I would.
And that's fine, and I totally agree, but I'm just trying to get some sense so that staff knows what way we're going here. So unless, I think, that unless there's a motion made to change the salary by a certain amount, no action leaves the salaries where they are.
Mayor?
Councilman?
Just a question of staff or the attorney in the charter to adjust our salaries, even if we do it, if there's a motion made, an ordinance passed, the change of salaries after the November election, that would not take effect until after the next election, is that correct? So it would be 2014, after that election, so it would not be the 2015 budget before anything would take, salaries would change if we made the motion, correct?
That's right.
Councilmember DeBlick, that is correct. Anytime the council votes to change its salary permanently, that change will not take effect until after the next municipal election, the next general municipal election. So if the ordinance to change the salaries were passed after November 6 this year, that change would not take effect until after the next municipal election, which I think is 2014.
But if it's passed, but if it is passed prior to...
If it's passed prior to November 6, it can take effect after November 6.
In January.
But even, even with the publishing process, we would have to pass a motion tonight to change that salaries if that would pass before the November 6. Council meeting, correct? Isn't there a 30-day post, publishing period for an ordinance?
I don't believe so. Unless that's special, you could, of course, you could follow up with a motion right now directing the city attorney to draft an ordinance and hold a hearing. Without having the ordinance in hand, it's difficult to make the publication deadline of 10 o'clock tomorrow.
But, but my point is, is I don't think the council has an appetite to introduce a motion like that tonight or either at the next council meeting, so as far as the mayor is having $13,000 in the budget, it's kind of a moot point, because that money is going to be available there if we have a balanced budget, or we lower our, or lower the taxes by $13,000. That would be the other option, so, and then we would not be able to look at council salaries changing until the 2015, so, and I think that's, that's my feeling, but I think the finance committee is, you know, takes some direction, and we've got a couple of, we've got two finance meetings where you're going to be reviewing the budget and will, and come out with a balanced budget in the end, but those are, those are the two options I see, is either pass a motion tonight, or if we have not, then we just move forward and either roll that money into the budget and use it someplace else, or lower the taxes by $13,000. So...
Councilman Anderson?
I think that's right. I think, I think I have the clarity that we need for, and I hope staff does, to know where we are in this. I'm just going to forewarn you, the last item on the, under miscellany is also going to be, we're going to be bringing back some additional money if the council approves that. There'll be another close to $5,500 being cut from the budget, so we're not, we're not done yet, but this all does have to come back to the finance committee, and we're going to have a workshop where we can talk some more, but we need to get some things in place, and I think we're in place. We did the baseball boosters, there's no interest in the mayor and council, the mayor wants to allocate some different funds. I, I think that's where we are.
So where should we go from here?
Well, Ron had a question.
I get the feeling that nobody is here, I mean, supporting this recommendation to increase our pay. I mean, I, I'm not against increasing it, because I know what it takes and the time and the hours that I put into it, and I know what the mayor puts into it and several other council people, but I think the prudent thing to do is redirect it as I stated earlier at this time. You know, I mean, we can wait two years, I mean, not going broke tomorrow, I mean, and if it needs a motion, I would make that motion, that we leave the money in the budget and redirect it as I stated earlier.
Do we need a motion? Mr. Mayor?
I don't know, do we need a motion?
My understanding, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is you do not need a motion. If you, if nothing happens, your salaries will not change, and they can't change then until after the next election, after November 6. So if, even if you've included funds for a salary increase in the budget, that simply can't happen if you don't make a motion specifically and pass an ordinance before this coming election to increase the salaries. So I don't believe any motion is necessary.
But I think, and I don't want to speak for you, but I think Councilmember Christianson wants to make sure that that $13,500 are directed as he suggested, which is to the baseball boosters and $500.
That can be determined at another time, I understand.
That's, I mean, I think that was what he wanted to do, and if that action takes a motion, that's the question.
Well, I always draw my motion in if it doesn't require a motion.
I guess I, I think you can do it by motion if you wish to. Again, I just would clarify, I mean, we've gotten, the staff has gotten the direction it needs to, in terms of the budget, and that would be action that you can also take as the 2013 budget is adopted. I mean, we will now adjust the 2013 budget, and one of the adjustments we will bring to you December 3rd is in $13,000 added to the line item for community organizations, $13,000 removed from council, and $500 added to travel and training. I mean, you can do a motion if you wish to do so.
Or it could be done at the next finance meeting, because I understand.
It can do, it can be whatever the council's most comfortable with right now.
Then we can move on.
I just want the council to be clear. All right, we'll move on. I just have a question.
If we wanted to give us a salary increase for 2014, could we make a motion now and say it doesn't take effect until January 1st, 2014?
Yes, but you need to direct the city attorney to have an ordinance in hand so that on the October 15th meeting, you make a motion to hold a hearing, we have to have the ordinance out to the Tribune by about 10 o'clock the next day, and the hearing is held on November 5th and voted on after the hearing, and that takes effect one day before the election. That would comply with law. That would comply with law, my understanding.
No, I think you misunderstood. Councilmember Fagerly was not asking for 2013, you were asking for 2014.
No, but it has to be done before a general election, so it has to be done now, the next general election. General election is the key of the 14th.
Well, my concern is if we go paperless, and I don't see why the city should have to buy iPads for all the council people, because they're going to use them for personal use, too. So the money would be there, so the council people could purchase their own, whatever they have, you know, in 2014.
Okay.
Modernization.
Are we all in agreement?
It has to happen before this general election, even though we would delay the implementation until '14, the authorization has to come, so that the population can hear that, understand that, and make their vote for you at the general election.
Otherwise, it would have to wait until the next general election, which would be?
November of '14.
Yeah.
Yeah.
November of '14, and then take effect November of '15.
Are you clear on that?
I am. I think we've beat this.
So we don't do anything?
We aren't going to do anything. We will have more detailed information and thoughts for the Finance Committee on Monday. All right, we're good. We'll go to the next agenda item, that's a 2011 financial statement. David Early of Westburg and Nations presented the City of Wilmer's 2011 financial statement to us. He explained that not only do they perform an audit of the financial statement itself, but they also audit the city's compliance with state and federal requirements. He stated there was no compliance issues at the city as of 2011, but there was one finding with the financial statement in regard to accounting for the retirees' benefits liability. To correct this finding, the city is required to hire an actuary to formally determine the amount to be accrued. Mr. Early reported that the general fund is in good shape with the amount to be accrued. Mr. Early reported that the general fund is in good shape with the fund balance at the end of 2011 well over average annual expenditures. There were also no issues in the other governmental funds. He noted the waste treatment plant, which is an enterprise fund, reflects capital asset disposals of 3.8 million, for which the majority is the decommissioning of the old plant. Mr. Early recommended the following policy improvements. First one, consolidate funds, in particular transferring the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Rack Eight, and public improvement revolving funds to the general fund. Number two, improve budget management by allowing the administrator to manage intra-departmental budgets with council monitoring the department budgets totals, as well as formally recognizing any budget overruns by department. Centralize the process of collecting and retaining grant information, and consider including the Wilmer HRA as a component unit of the city's financial statements. That was for information only, but I think we're going to hear back from staff on how they want to handle some of those recommendations. Next item, we reviewed the August Rice Trust report, and that was for information only. Next item was future agenda items. October 22nd, 2012, this will be a full council work session, and that'll include the HRA budget presentation and fund balances. Agenda items for the November 26th work session include budget presentations by Rice Hospital and MUC, and if there are other suggestions, we'd like to hear those. Under miscellany, I talked about the Wilmer Library funding request in the mayor's proposed 2013 budget. That included a 3% increase for $10,986. I suggested that that amount be reduced by half to 1 and 1/2 percent, or $5,493. The library is fully aware of my thoughts on that. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would move the recommendation, reducing the funding request increase for the Wilmer Library from 3% to 1 and 1/2%, which reduces the increase to approximately $5,493 for 2013.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to reduce the funding request increase for the Wilmer Public Library from 3% to 1 and 1/2%, which reduces the increases to approximately $5,493 for 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Okay, I think I wore everybody out. Unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for September 24th, 2012. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I want to go back to item number five. Did Mr. Early not mention that in 2013, that there may be a rate increase at the wastewater treatment plant? Can we discuss that a little bit?
Yeah, that's a good point. He did, he did, and I'll turn this over to staff, but he did make mention that, that the funding is starting to dwindle, and, yeah, that rates may have to be increased, but I'll.
We are in the process of doing a rate study right now. We've been using Springstead to conduct that rate study. We've just gotten some preliminary information that we haven't had an opportunity to review. But yes, Mr. Early did indicate that the revenues are not sufficient to maintain the required reserves for the wastewater treatment fund at this point.
I think we have a motion and a second on that?
We do.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Labor Relations Committee report for September 26th, 2012, consideration of the patrol officer position. Councilman Oppen, do you want to explain that?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met last week, Wednesday, at September 26th. For information on was item number one, Mr. Selvam, Arrested Committee regarding his opinions on the proposed increase in pay for the mayor and council, as well as opinions on labor negotiations and strategies. Item number two is employee vacancies. Ms. Stevens, our city administrator, reviewed the status of the six employee vacancies that we currently have. Ms. Stevens stated that she and the police chief, Wifels, were requesting the action to fill the vacant police officer position and maintain a sworn office for, a sworn office of 32 officers. Chief Wifels stated that the officer is needed, however, actually, training would begin in January of 2013, due to our current training of two officers at this time. Chief Wifels also explained that he would be replacing the gang enforcement officer position as well, which would be filled via internal promotion. Chief Wifels also stated that the city is working with the county to suppress gang-related activities. After discussion, a motion was made and seconded to fill the vacant patrol officer position using the current eligibility list, and the motion was carried unanimously. I'll move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to fill the vacant patrol officer position. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, timing, and is it prudent to do this presently? I'm not sure if the citizens of Wilmer know that we're still in negotiations with the police department, but we've been through arbitration, mediation, we've had a, the mediator, Mr. Latimer, issued his final response. Should we be doing this? I know that we've budgeted for that position for 2013, is that correct?
That is correct. The position has been budgeted for 2012 as well as 2013.
Have we budgeted for the increases that could come down the road from the negotiations? Are they anywhere in the budget? Is that money we're going to have to find afterwards? We don't know what, we have a, we have a feeling for what they may be, the council and the staff does, but is that in the budget also? Those increases that are, could be coming?
I'll defer to the board of directors to answer that question.
Yes, I do. They've, that all settled contracts are in there, and there was direction to add to the budget an anticipated percentage.
For those proposed numbers that we've seen, is that what you're saying? Because we have not settled with LELS.
No, that matter is still, that matter is still pending.
On that same issue, is the arbitration findings from Mr. Latimer, is that not, and could not not be public presently? I mean, it's done?
It is a matter of, at this point, a potential litigation.
So the, his findings are not public?
At this point, no.
It's under appeal, I think.
It's under appeal.
Okay. No, I guess my understanding is, once arbitrator says, this is it, this is it, that the public should be able to see that. But regardless of that, I don't think it's prudent of us to hire somebody when we're still in negotiation, even though we budgeted for it. I, I have a bad feeling about it, and that's maybe just me, but I, if it was in my business and I was dealing with the union and we were still negotiating, I don't think I'd hire anybody presently. And as my study, I passed out last year, you know, the 13 cities that I called, police departments, were, we have more police officers per less people than any other city our size at 32. At 31, we still are above 12 of them. But how does the rest of the council feel? Is it good to be, to be hiring at this point in time, knowing that we're negotiating with the police department? Is it, if so, I'll go along with you, but what are your feelings?
I'll throw it to the council.
I think we have to do something with our gang problem. All you got to do is read in the newspaper. So something has to be done, and hopefully we have someone on staff that's willing to do it and will be good at it. I don't know how much training they'll have to do, they have to go for seminars, or what's the procedure for that?
Councilmember Fagerly, to answer that question, there is extra training required. We do send them off to, there's usually nothing offered in Minnesota, we have to send them out of state, but we do specialize, or we do send them to specialized training in gang enforcement, and then bring that officer back and put him back on the street to work gangs here.
Okay, so he probably won't be on duty until late fall, early winter?
He or she, depends on who we assign from within the department. The position requires an independent officer that can work without, or can work with little direction. But to answer that question, there's a good chance that we won't even, if you approve this position tonight, that, to fill this position tonight, we would not be hiring until January 1st, and with our current shortage, with one person out on workman's comp, we probably would not actually get somebody in the gang unit until maybe February, unless I can work some type of deal out with the sheriff who collaborate and work with their gang unit.
You won't be cost-sharing with the county for this position?
No, not cost-sharing, just sharing resources. For us to be effective, we should actually have, I should be requesting another officer in addition to this. You should have two officers to work a gang enforcement team. It's a very dangerous position to work. They work plainclothes, they are in bars, they are in back alleys confronting gang members, normally as a team, and they've always been scheduled as a team. Now, we've been working them for the last year and a half with just one, or actually, since Dell retired, his last working day was the end of May, we haven't had anybody. But we do need to address the gang problem that is present in the community. The sheriff recognizes that and has started his own gang team of two. What I'm hoping to do is maybe see if we can't work out some type of deal with him, where we can get the resource of his gang officers in town, working in conjunction with ours, and we can get by with one. That's, that's the direction I'm trying to go right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I understand your statements, the position, we have a vacant position now, so the amount of salary budgeted for that position for 2012 is being saved.
That's correct. Officer Wagner's last working, her last official day was, I believe, the end of June.
Yeah, so we've had savings already accrued, and will accrue more until the end of the year?
Correct.
Right, so, I mean, I appreciate Councilman Christensen's concerns, but we're in a position where the, this, this particular position won't really cost us any more money, even with the salary increase with, as a result of current labor negotiations.
It would not, had Officer Wagner not retired, we would still be paying the same amount of money.
Right, thank you.
I'll call for the question.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Item number three, Mr. Mayor and council, was, I distributed some information that I've done some research on, a conflict of interest policy adopted by other cities, and suggested that the Wilmer City Council consider the adoption of the same and request city staff and the city attorney to review the information and provide a recommendation for discussion, and other people concurred with that. I also want to add that the reason for this, or why I brought this up, is to help dissolve any misconception of wrongdoing by anybody who serves to any capacity in any of our boards or commissions, whether it be Rice Hospital, even including the department heads and city employees, there's no conflict of interest there, just to kind of clear the slate of this non-trust of city government, that if there is a conflict of interest that does arise, that the people understand it and graciously abstain from voting, or not be involved in that particular action. And I think it's time we take a look at it, so I just wanted to explain that to the committee. If there was any questions, I'd like to maybe discuss it further. If not, staff will just be reviewing what other cities have and make a recommendation to us. At 5:10, we made a motion to enter into closed session to discuss the contract negotiations with LELS and strategies. This matter was for information, then we reopened the meeting, and we closed it immediately thereafter. I move to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for September 26th, 2012. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Community Development Committee report for September 26th, Councilman Doc.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had four items. The first item was public comments, and there were no public comments offered at this meeting. Item number two, county sanitarian activities, for information only. Mr. Winish, who is the sanitarian for County I County, Ms. Steen, and Mr. Kleindl reviewed the county's environmental services and responsibilities, such as licensing and enforcement of food, beverages, and lodging establishments, tobacco licenses, safe drinking water, act compliance, and gathering, and general education. Mr. Winish also reviewed the county's role in licensing and regulating the manufactured home parks within the county, including those within the city limits. Mr. Kleindl explained that under state statute, cities do not have the authority to perform public health services. The committee thanked the county staff for the information. Item number three, citizen support center demonstration, this again is for information only. Mr. Boshin, IT coordinator, provided a demonstration of the citizen support center feature on the website, the city website. Mr. Boshin stated that it is a new feature that allows citizens to electronically submit questions, concerns, or service needs, such as a fallen tree. The committee requested a demonstration at a future council The committee requested a demonstration at a future council meeting. And unless there are questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for September 26, 2012. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Consideration of certification of unpaid utility charges as a lien. Kevin, would you like to explain that to us?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, every year about this time, we get a collection of properties that have unpaid utilities against them since the last adoption in October of 2011. In this case, you have the list and the resolution of those that have not made payment. The commissioners hold a meeting, offering the owners of these properties to make a comment as to why they aren't paying their utility charges, and nobody showed up for that, and so the commissioners adopted a resolution requesting the city clerks send these off to the county auditor for collection for these unpaid utility charges in 2013, along with other taxes. So, I have no real information on the properties, other than they're listed and their amounts from the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, but it is staff's recommendation that we adopt the resolution certifying these various charges against these specific properties for collection in 2013.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
The motion has been seconded, for the city councils should adopt the resolution for the unpaid utility charges totaling fifty-five-hundred-twenty-one dollars and seventy-five cents, and direct staff to certify to the county auditor for collection, along with these other taxes. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tabliek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that carries, that motion carries. Consideration of the resolution appointment of the vacant judges, Kevin, would you explain that as well?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, pursuant to state statute, we are required to adopt a resolution showing the public the election judges that will be at the polling locations on November 6th for the general election. It is a balance of the two political parties by their declaration, and you have listed before you each of our twelve precincts with the head judge and the judges serving with them. It is staff's recommendation that we introduce and adopt this resolution.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution for the election judges. Is there any discussion?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor.
Of course.
Do these judges have to be, live in those wards, or there's no?
Long ago, they had to live in the city of Wilmer. Then they made it to Candelai County, now they made it to the state of Minnesota. Might be the world soon, I'm not sure, but, so it's just the state of Minnesota, so, and we have times that some great ones here that moved out to Diamond Lake and so forth, we brought them back for a few years. You never want to lose quality election judges, but over time, as they've retired from the business, they're pretty much all from the city, but probably seventy percent are in their precinct.
Do we have any new ones? I mean, that come aboard each year, because I see the same names on here a lot of times, and?
I'll say there's ten new ones.
Okay, do they have to go through some training?
Training has been conducted twice by the county, and normal for everybody, head judges additional, and they call them back again right before the general.
Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Any further discussion?
Hey, Kevin, the, the amount that they're paid, is that set by statute, or is that set by city policy?
It is set by as much as I can get through a budget, I guess. There's no set standard whatsoever. I believe we have head judges at twelve, and I'm comparing those more and more because we're having difficulty with the head judges. It's tough to pull them out and serve with all that extra stress and pressure, so I think the next budget will be asking for more that's more competitive with all the townships around us and other cities. But no statute governs that.
I just appreciate their willingness to serve.
It's a long day.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Tabliek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Consideration of the Civic Center special event by on-sale liquor license holder permit. Kevin?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, we have had this several times before, where the Wilmer Curling Club holds their curling bahn spiel, and pursuant to the allowance of sale of alcohol, they choose to do that, using the services of Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery. They must have the services of an on-sale current liquor license holder. This bahn spiel is October 26th and 27th, and the Community Education and Recreational Board gave their approval last Friday. It is staff's recommendation that we approve this permit, and it must be on roll call by our city charter.
Motion to approve.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the liquor license permit to the Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery LLC and the Wilmer Curling Club. Is there a discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Tabliek?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. The Community Planning Month proclamation. Bruce, where is Bruce? There he is. Apparently, I don't have a proclamation.
Sorry.
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, October has been designated as National Planning Month, and the proclamation being offered to the mayor here is a proposed proclamation for the city council of the city of Wilmer to proclaim October as planning month in the city of Wilmer, and staff would very much like to see the council make that proclamation.
Thank you, Bruce. The Community Planning Month proclamation, whereas changes consistent and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places, and whereas the community planning and plans can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people work and live, and whereas the community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community, and whereas the full benefits of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation, and whereas the month of October designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories, and whereas the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners endorsed National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and planning implementation make to the quality of our settlements and environments, and whereas the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members, the planning commissions, and other citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Wilmer, and whereas we recognize the many valuable contributions made by professional community planners by the city of Wilmer, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public services by these professionals. Now therefore be it resolved that the month of October 2012 is hereby designated as Community Planning Month in the city of Wilmer in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month, and Bruce, I'd like to present this to you, so that, and thank you so much for all that you do, and being on the planning commission, I know what you do. Thank you again, and I think it needs to be signed by Kevin.
Okay.
Announcement of council committee dates. Councilman Oppen?
No meetings scheduled today, but I just want to inform you that at the next meeting, I would like to have full council participation in reevaluating the city administrator's position on our next agenda item, if we can coordinate that, just want to let you know.
Thank you.
Public Works, Public Safety. October 9th, 4:45.
Councilman Dockin?
Community Development Committee meeting, October 11th, at 4:45, Conference Room One.
And Councilman Anderson?
Finance Committee will meet Monday, October 8th, 4:45.
Under miscellaneous, Ms. Stevens, did you have something that you?
Yes, we have, before you said at your places this evening was a resolution establishing our procedures relating to compliance with the reimbursement bond and regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. This is an intent to reimburse, it relates, it is a resolution so that for our 2013 street program, we can reimburse from the bond proceeds to the general fund our costs for the design and surveying of that work. This year, that work is being done by Bollig Incorporated as the engineers, and so we typically, we haven't always done this type of a resolution, but we've previously had in-house staff doing it, now that we are contracting that out, it is my recommendation that we approve, that you approve the resolution.
Move to approve.
Second. And just so that I'm clear on this, we have a motion in a second to approve the resolution, but how shall I word the resolution?
It is a resolution establishing procedures relating to compliance with the internal revenue, with the, to compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code.
That being said, is there any discussion?
Did you say this was going to save us some money earlier in the meeting? Somebody stated that, or is this?
No, this is our intent to reimburse, it would allow us to reimburse from the bond proceeds of the 2013 street project, our costs for, for the design and work.
Okay. Call for the question.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tabliek?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Councilman Amen, did you have something that you wanted to speak about?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. I had a brain freeze the other night, every once in a while, we all get one, but during the budgeting process that I've been involved with for the short three years and the previous eight years, I noticed we, maybe we should be doing something differently in the request for people that come in to ask for money, like the baseball boosters, Meals on Wheels, we always deal with those groups in the Finance Committee, which we don't all participate in, because there's four people there, and it comes to committee here to be discussed. I wonder if we can maybe streamline that by, when a group or an individual or organization comes in to request funds, it goes into the department, into Charlene's office, and from there, it gets brought over to the Finance Committee. But with that information, I would like to have a full financial disclosure along with that. Any group that's asking for city or public funds should be accountable and should be transparent for the needs that they're requesting. And prior to us, to this, I don't think, we haven't maybe explored all the options. What I'd like to do, to reinforce my questioning, or this action to be taken, was I just want to make sure we're making the right decision to give the money where it's going to do the most amount of good. And with a financial statement, it will disclose what the financial health of that organization is, and I think we need that information, and we should be entitled to that information, and hopefully be receptive, the other groups would be receptive to show that to us at the time. I think it would be a lot easier to make these decisions in the future, and I'm just, would like to bring that recommendation to staff, to come back with the list of details requesting financial disclosure, current reports, written audits, you know, typical financial reports showing their financial status and their savings and holdings, if they have any.
And Councilman, who would that be directed to?
I believe it would be directed to staff, and from there, it would probably have to come to whatever committee they'd like to give it to.
Take that, or advisement?
We can certainly, we can certainly do that, and I think you're talking, just to be, just so that I am clear, Councilman Amen, for 2014, I mean, or are you sort of looking for that information for the 2013 budget?
Well, I would like to receive it, that's the reason why I'm asking this, I would like to receive it prior to the final in-budgeting.
So, you would like to try to obtain, try to obtain information for the 2013 budget?
If it's possible.
Okay, I just needed some clarification.
And in the future, too.
Okay.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Is there any other further miscellaneous? If not, I'll enter again in motion to.
You just mentioned that Wilmer Municipal Utilities has an open house on October 11th at the Civic Center, 4:00 to 6:30 PM.
Thank you. And I might just mention, if you haven't received it in the packet, that the mayor will be out of town Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of this week. Do I entertain a message, or a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to adjourn.